Silver is me. Lord, let wisdom prevail. God has to lead us in the way that we should go. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The council cannot tell us where we are. It's hard. Come later.
Okay. Yesterday, we stopped on getting the report of the county engineer. Yeah, which was on Zaha. Yeah, I give the county engineer's report and they had a report from Mark Hooker.
Everybody's six feet apart.
What's up, man? Thank you, girl.
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay. Yesterday, I gave board members a copy of a letter from Mark Hooker. And this was in reference to project number WC nineteen dash two, Willmont Road, on Wednesday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty, after proper legal advertisement bids were received on the Willmont Road project. The result of the tabulation shows that Ford Ice Construction Company of Dixburg is the low bidder for the project. And Mr. Hooker Engineering was recommended that project be awarded to the low bidder Ford Ice Construction Company in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And further recommended that project fund be established for the project in the amount of eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and thirteen cents to pay for construction, engineering, contingencies, and testing. So that's what we were, Mr. President.
All right. Any questions, comments? Oh, we're finished up right there.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get here. We could hear each other yesterday. This is one of the funds that we've already voted on before that Hooker engineers finishing or doing. This is one of those projects they just didn't be in. That's what that was. I could hear you.
So what?
You want to have one?
Morning.
So who approved?
One information. Would you discuss this?
Excuse me?
Wouldn't we approve as a one information?
All right, we got a vote. We're working yesterday. The council put it to view. Well. Yeah, go ahead. The council will review briefly.
What do you guys want to ask?
Just move forward on yesterday and how we are today. Vote in its only favor. Okay, you will do your best. Yeah.
We have a letter from Hooker Engineering Services Incorporated. It's in reference to project number WC nineteen dash two, Willmont Road, on Wednesday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty at ten a.m. Bids were received on the Willmont Road project.
So on what day were these received?
Now.
What day were these received?
March twenty fifth. The results of the tabulation shows that Ford Ice Construction Company of Dixburg was the low bidder for the project. Therefore, Hooker Engineering recommends that the project be awarded to the low bidder Ford Ice Construction Company in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And further, Hooker Engineering recommends that the project fund be established for the project in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and thirteen cents to pay for construction, engineering, contingencies, and testing. That was the matter that was on board, you can't do.
A question, so are we just giving our work for the board stock on yesterday?
Yes, I see. I'm right with you there.
And what did you mean yesterday? Because actually my phone went completely out. Mr. November came by and explained to me that, or he talked to me that my services went out because I'm an AT&amp;T. And the only thing that I was able to hear from that board meeting was the minutes and then the nine one one. That was the only thing I heard. And so I would like to go back and revisit because I was not able to vote anything. It was not that I was not available. It was due to the board decided the president decided to have a meeting at the podcast when I made a reservation to go to a larger room. So it was not too. So I would like to revisit so I can be able to address my concerns on the pieces that the board voted on. And I was not available when I know Mr. Redman was unavailable on certain calls. And then out there, Mr. Lee Olmos was not able to get on the podcast. So he had to talk about both by telephone. So I think because we have so many issues going on, so everybody can be on the same page, I think we need to maybe go back and revisit this agenda so everyone can be on the same page, the votes can be cast comfortably.
We really didn't. We really didn't now. Sorry. Yeah, here, please. We really didn't this much. We just missed the nine one one expenditure, the emergency management. And where we are now is the county engineers. So there wasn't much that we would have missed.
Well, that means the county engineers.
That's what I'm saying. First part, let me do this. Yes, I see you too. You didn't just think this, bro. We don't need to hear.
So where are we right now?
The county engineers. I got it.
So we on number six?
Yes, ma'am. All right. There was a motion on the floor to take the lowest bid.
Who said that, ma'am?
That's right.
Of course, they had that exception.
That was right. You got a second to go out to Benson.
One information. On those particular bids, how many companies do you have in particular?
Three. You need to back three.
I don't have a head. I don't have a head. I didn't get it. I'd like to look at the deal to state.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any more questions? I have a question a second. Any more questions? Any more comments?
I have another question. When will the next bid have a Hooker engineer?
I don't know.
Can you let us know? Maybe we get the email so we don't have to have a separate page.
You will get the other.
Could I get a report of the bid taken place?
There's a lot of ways to get one of the bids taken place.
But it was like this bid I thought did took place on March twenty fifth.
That was on our last meeting. They had a report last week. It said on our last report. What date was it?
All right, y'all.
Also, yes, that's me.
Yes, ma'am.
If you just let me know if it's in fact on the same page.
Yes, ma'am. All in favor of the lowest bid? Show that side about. Any opposed? Most curious. Thank you.
Everybody go.
Everybody, if you may. Any other comments?
That's all that I have.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you go, I do have some letters that we need to authorize. The president of the board to sign to go back to the state aid project. So just to need authority for the project to sign these.
That's it. What is that, ma'am?
This was, this is gonna be on project number SAP seventy-six nine four. And and this is they have done a final inspection on this state aid project SAP seventy-six nine four. And they just need a formal acceptance document. So need the president to sign this acceptance document.
Which, which way is it?
It's SAP seventy-six nine four. I'm not sure what that is because it does not say the name of the road. It just says SAP seventy-six nine four project.
And that's just because it's complete and that's just to finalize that?
Right, this is the final answer. It's from state aid.
Questions, comments?
I just a signature.
Ma'am?
A signature just need what is needed?
Yeah, the president needs to sign off. Normally, once they've done their their final answer to the project, they send correspondence. And they have the president to sign it. And so does the state aid engineer.
So what?
You were probably saying on the fifth, so that's out of the heart. Anybody, most curious. Was there a change order as well to other projects?
Was there one?
Was there a change order to other projects?
No.
It was for silver, right?
Oh, you got she. She leaves, I had the change order. She got this one.
Okay. Okay, road manager, the focus card you have had? Did I make that?
The motion to approve the agenda. I don't think voting for the outcome of the board in and out. How did that turn out? I remember initially, it was some concerns about approving the agenda.
About what?
Approving the agenda about, I remember he was telling us that Mr. Gordon wanted to leave IAS after the agenda to not have the agenda, it's gonna be the minutes.
Oh. Wait, I said.
Yesterday, when they were discussing the minutes, you was bringing the attention there, most were going to be made to leave IAS after the minutes, the part of IAS minutes.
No, not leaving them.
I mean, there was a conversation.
It wasn't to leave them out, but it was a question about since that was in the minutes from the meeting on the sixteenth. And on the sixteenth, there was a contract approved. And it was being questioned about four years. Normally, just on a position, it's only in a pending place. That was the question about the contract. Once you adopt the minutes and put it into your minutes.
So was it approved then?
No, we had to another second vote to go back and give everybody a chance to review. And read the contract.
All right, so did y'all take?
Yes, we did.
So you took a vote on it first, but I was not part of the conversation when you voted it, Mr. Redman?
I don't know. I'm in the book. The minutes were approved as adopted at the last meeting.
So when he said something totally different?
Were approved as adopted.
Well, can we go back to on that vote, because Mr. Redman gets a vote on it and he's saying something totally different what you're saying.
No, what he's saying is that was a discussion. It really, and the chair could have moved out of order because it was it had nothing to do with whether the minutes were accurate or not. But the minutes were adopted as accurate.
Okay.
By the man who spoke.
By a three people?
Yes, sir. The minutes were adopted by the man who spoke at by three who were on on the communication time as print.
As print?
Yes.
Okay, what was the second motion made because I'm not
No, no second motion made. In fact, let's do me this, only the only other motions that were approved, I believe, were a motion on, and Mr. President, you correct me if I'm wrong, was a motion pertaining to the order for the courthouse and which we delivered access for was approved as well as authorizing the board president to sign the letter to determine the third, giving Mr. Hooker thirty days for his own state aid contract.
Oh, now, Charles, that she don't have any minutes. Well, the last I have is minutes.
That's all.
Now, what was after that vote was taken? There was a vote where some concerned on vote the contract. There was a vote taken to, for all of us to review the contract.
That's right. That's what I think.
Review the contract. And at the next meeting, recommendations for possibly modifications. There was, there was lots of things in the contract that I had questions about and that's why I was just encouraging everybody to review it. We did, we did vote on to accept it, but we also voted everybody to come back next meeting and if there's a problem, even though it's term itself. The four years is maybe out of line as far as it exceeds our term.
Let me tell you, the last, what I have is a motion to have every board member review the contract, make recommendations to the board attorney. And the motion was made by Gordon, who said that Benson, McGee, Gordon, and Benson voted aye. Brooks nay. And Redman was offline. And that's what I have on my minutes.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Brooks.
The minutes have made it from there.
All right, Ms. Brooks.
Okay, I guess my biggest concern is about this whole situation. We, we, all five of us had access to that contract since, since the month of January. We have now, the board voted to approve the contract. Not only the board approved the contract, the president has signed the contract. How is it we coming to the fourth month and we're still talking about the contract? And I know it was a concern of yours, Mr. Gordon. But my biggest concern is why did you take time to read the contract in January, February, or March before Mr. President even signed the contract? Why wait every month? We come to this board meeting. It's something new that you bring up about IAS.
All right, Brooks.
I'm asking you a question. Yes, because I was having this discussion as well. So you think you tell me after I watched the person's meeting on yesterday? Why is that?
No, we can move on.
Oh, so you, you have us, right? No, no, we should be in the meeting just to get something. We should be, but first of all, I asked you to have a meeting in a building so we don't have this problem.
Well, you just got a board.
No, you, you decided to have this podcast on yesterday. When I said
Now, if you have a question, you want to ask someone, meaning ask those along questions outside of this. We can very easily talk to you about the board yesterday. It had its costs.
I've called this board several times. I called him, he never returns my call. So I'm not just there and asking questions about. No, I'm not gonna ask anything better than official board meeting. My question to you is why is it that every, you know, why is it that we couldn't discuss this earlier? That's my only concern at this point.
Do not answer that. We move on.
Okay, so we're addressing this with agendas because you decided to do the podcast. Nobody, you know, you screwed up. You told me, you sat with him, and now we all are taking, we can't have a discussion today, Mr. President.
No, that's not for long.
No, not for long to me. I'm just guessing an issue that's a real issue that's been coming up every month about a lack of a lack of engineering firm that apparently is a problem every month. So I'm just trying to get understanding. And it's just that I want, as you're gonna be something next month, we gotta address the IAS.
Do not answer. Okay, can we move on with this agenda, please?
Exactly.
Thank you. Sorry, we've had to have a word with Land Park. Any of those rules that come up? Any of that?
I'll take care of it all.
Thank you.
Mr. President? I want to add the various, the fluid plane barriers that you've been speaking.
Okay, that's, I can get a second. Got a second. I got a second to add fluid plane barriers. That's an addition. Fluid barriers. Yeah. You said fluid plane barriers. Yeah. I got one minute a second.
I'm sorry, what was that?
To add the fluid plane barriers.
Discussion.
A discussion. All the favorites you have sent. Any votes? Most curious? Okay, this is a problem. This is my
Yes.
Anybody ready, sir?
We have a spending forty-eight point ninety percent of our budget through April sixth compared to the plan of fifty-eight point thirty-three percent. Our six deposit, our check through April sixth totaled eight million, six hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars, fifty-seven cents. I am requesting board approval of my claim's documents totaling six hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars, fifty-four cents.
Any questions, comments? Any votes? Any votes? Please, ma'am. I got a motion and a second on the claims paper. All the favorites you have sent. Any of those? Most curious? Show the two supervisors out. Three votes.
So we just had the first supervisor.
Yes.
Requesting approval to distribute payments for both vehicle rental and railroad contacts with this year twenty nineteen.
You accept that?
I got a motion and a second on the favorites you have sent. Any of those? Most curious?
Requesting payment to Ford Ice Construction Company in the amount of two hundred forty thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars for payment on three quarters of your road project.
Close it. Got a motion and a second. Any of those? Any favors you have sent? Any votes? Please continue, continue your supervisor. Next, you vote. Any red?
Requesting payment to Ford Ice Construction Company in the amount of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars for payment on one of Washington County Road Project.
Motion.
That was him all.
Motion.
Close it.
Second. Motion for second, all the favors you have sent. Any of those? Most curious?
Requesting payment to Hooker Engineering Services in the amount of twenty-four thousand, twenty-four dollars, fifty-seven cents for engineering services for SAP seventy-six nine four, not to be angry with your facility.
Okay, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna move this second, all the favors you have sent. Any of those? Most curious, that's three. Two others.
Requesting payment to Hooker Engineering Services in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars, twenty-four cents for engineering services for their estate, six point ten for your road.
Close it. I got a motion and a second. All the favors you have sent. Any of those? Most curious? The key gets very difficult. Which?
Requesting payment to Hooker Engineering Services in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars for things for engineering services for Washington County Railroad Project.
So here. I got a question. You said railroad. That's where you're trying to put three. I have, I have a problem with three being on the road. I've said this several times, I still don't have my hands up. I'd like to have a discussion. Railroad, three.
Okay. I hope you like to have done, take this under advisement.
Yes.
Is that where Mr. President?
Take under advisement.
Yeah, he want to have a public discussion on this, on this particular project. I only have a motion on it that did not get the second. I, you know.
You can do a motion, post comments.
Okay. This is about the board, would you could step in?
Oh, yes.
I got a motion, post comments, why don't you second? Uh, can't second.
No, he made a year. He made a motion.
All right. All right, so I guess the best board is supposed to accept that. The last second. Most of you go ahead and take that with your best and by Mr. Redman. Second, last, and fourth. All the favors you have sent. Any of those?
Thank you. Post your comments.
Most curious?
Most comments? Post comments.
I'm sorry, post comments. That's your man.
Requesting payment to Hooker Engineering Services in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars, seventy-nine cents for engineering services for ERBR seventy-six oh one, Steel Road, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred five dollars, thirty-three cents for ERBR seventy-six oh three, Betsy Road, eighteen thousand, minus one oh five dollars for ERBR seventy-six oh six, Long Airport Road, twenty thousand, minus six dollars, twenty cents for ERBR seventy-six oh seven, IAS Road, seven thousand, five hundred forty, your ten, for with Lance and Marion reports for ERBR seventy-six oh seven, IAS Road.
Questions, comments? No votes? Second. And a second. What's that, what's that question?
Oh, that's project, he said one of the projects. One of the projects. That's what the rest of the ones are.
One of these.
Okay. What is that there?
For the various services.
Okay, yeah, this project.
Three.
Thank you. So all this is one of the different. Okay, what, what? Which project number?
ERBR seventy-six oh one, which is for Silver Road, ERBR seventy-six oh three, which is Betsy Road, ERBR seventy-six oh six, Long Airport Road, ERBR seventy-six oh seven, IAS Road.
Okay, and a motion and a second. All the favors you have sent. Any of those? That's your man.
Requesting approval to send annual payments of two hundred dollars to our board.
Question, no votes? I got a motion and a second. All the favors you have sent. Any of those? Most curious?
Requesting payment to IAS engineer in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars for engineering services on Bourbon Road, problems with train upgrade, Washington County Courthouse, H agent, utility department upgrade, dirt track, East Lake, Washington Road coverage, investment of the South Marine Project and bridge closure.
You move. Second. And a second. All the favors you have sent. Any of those? That's your man.
Asking board approval for board trust partner, James Roy's, final contributor at two point five eight percent for he goes to approve for the shares of the company. James Roy proposed point two five.
Close it. Second. And a motion and a second. All the favors you have sent. Any of those? Most curious?
Also, I was just from yesterday, and I am as the assistant engineer.
Yes.
Mr. Jaron Collins.
Yes. I was with Jaron Collins, he's an engineer that, that you know, who is setting up in the city engineer for our mission here from East Brom, Greenfield, and you know, with the Texas State University. He was on board yesterday with the first day. They said they have to share with this service.
What was it? What about?
Thank you.
Um, I also have the monthly report for Justice Court, Mark Stellman, in the amount of fifty thousand, eight hundred for the flight to general line. Um, at one of our programs, I have the report of veteran officer. My name is partner. And also a change order for Washington County Good Sound Railroad project, my hood regenerating. Is to add a struck to the six thousand, to the unsupported link and the amount of drug in the channel of construction chain request is for six thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars. Out of the thirty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollar contingency fund that is, this is a balance of thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight million of contingency fund.
Questions, comments?
So.
Got a motion.
Sorry.
And a second, all the favors you left out. Any of those? Motion carries, go ahead, look here.
Do we need to sit down, do we need to vote for it?
Yeah.
Not making the vote in order to get into the.
Who approved? For forty, forty-sixty?
No, I think we voted on that first meeting. You talking about bringing him on board? I think that was in the first meeting that that was already voted up. We just didn't identi-, y'all didn't identify, we just identified the position, not necessarily.
Last thing I have is a lease for the copier that was approved for Judge Judy Richard. Oh, it was a new graduate.
Oh.
So he's president. One point four twenty-six.
Yes, well, remember.
How many? One point four twenty-six.
One thousand.
And whose copy is it?
Judge Judy Rich.
One hundred and forty-four.
You remember mine?
That's mine, that's mine.
Right.
And this is to charge per copy? And this is to see.
I didn't have it. Including the two hundred color copies. For free, free, two hundred free color copies, the unlimited, uh, black and white.
Do they, uh, pay for the, uh, do they pay for the color? The, the child or, or any for free?
That's a shit shit.
I mean, change.
Yeah, yeah, I have the same.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Right.
Do I have a second? It's answered.
You got it.
Uh, do I, so I have a motion and a second.
You do, that's something right.
All the favors you left out. Any of those, motion carries, second. Hey, it's good.
Yeah, and with President, I told you, it's started, can I do a couple things? One, uh, is the board to, uh, members access orders and I, I drafted a proposed liberty access notice. And I will ask the board to review that, uh, and if it meet with board approval, to approve. Uh, as the notice to be posted around courthouse. Certainly, uh, it brought to my attention this morning by Ms. Carter, that we did not include the administrative complex. So I would recommend that we be authorized to propel one for administrative complex as well.
Everybody understand what we're talking about, liberty access? When you're probably outside and make sure that we're fully loaded inside the courthouse and different areas. We, we only, how do we do the administration office, we just lock up the door?
Uh, and, and what I'll do is, I, I will propel one similarly, uh, to, to this one with phone numbers on there and certainly you can lock that office because, uh, really intruded on a person's, uh, the government officials as well as persons with appointments to see the administrative office be coming there anyway. So, sir. So I, I, you know, I would recommend that you lock that with respect to, uh, emergency management. Uh, I would give to, uh, Mr. Bertrand and his staff on that, even as well as a deal on his and Congressman Thompson on the other. Now, we still haven't talked about Justice Court, but, uh, Justice, the office that are managed by the supervisors, I would recommend just lock the door and put a note about pointing on. All the rest of. Things, right, that's correct, exactly right, they, they, and, and you may also consider throwing it, you'll, you'll, uh, kind of demonstrate the office. But you just sort of know when I'm saying about pointing it on and, and put a phone number.
All right.
You've already got that letter drafted, correct?
Uh, I don't have that one drafted, but I would, I would, it's, it's, that's, that's a simple one. This one, if you notice, we put the, the phone number up and I hope I covered all, if not tell me, so we can go back and, and then put the additional phone numbers on there. We include the judges and everyone else, and I hope I covered all of them.
Can I ask a question again, so, uh, in terms of the, the main courthouse, um, what are we doing about the entrance to the courthouse?
This will be posted at the entrance and a deputy will be at the out of door to, uh, and, and, and if you notice, we talk about, the deputy has required, has the right to determine whether or not you dare for essential business or not. Uh, and if you are to call and, uh, and make contact with your office or any office to see if they available to see that person at that time. Now, with respect to tax collection, uh, and, and, and I see our tax collectors in the back. Uh, you don't want to turn anyone down, but you don't want to have a ton of posts in the tax collector's office. So I, I would, you, how many stations you have in that, uh, Miss Lee?
Six.
Six stations, uh, we talked yesterday about the possibility, we call, uh, President, you and I, and you answer, about some type of portal of shields in that office. Because, uh, you know, the, the contact is so close in that office, uh, and you may want to look at trying to put some type of shield up to protect and isolate, uh, employees, uh, from the persons. And, 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 and with a slide there, and then the slide, their, their painting and whatever else they leave underneath. So that's something that you're gonna have to deal with, okay, in, in that office, uh, with respect to Ms. Hanson's office. Each office has a right to close its door inside courthouse, but I would advise that they put a notice, similar to what you drafted in the hands, you put that on your door, uh, to let people know once they get to your door, how to enter your office. Uh, Mr. Seer can do the same thing, to let them know how to enter his office. However, there has to be public ac- access, especially to our tax collector's office, for tags, paying taxes, and etc. to, to the various clerks' office, uh, for business. And as well as, the judges want to know that they gonna have to have the opportunity, uh, to, to hold court and ensure that, uh, people will be allowed to come in for court. But that's an essential business purpose. And, and, and so we gotta encourage, uh, Mr. Chief, the deputies, uh, to ask and inquire, what is your business when you enter that courthouse, this courthouse? And if it's not for essential business at this time, you have a right to say you can't come in at this time.
Mr. Chief.
Any questions?
I don't think about you saying this essential business, what, who you find is essential business, so that's.
Right, if you look in there, if you look in there, uh, there are certain items that needs fine, uh, to include essential business, such as, uh, purchasing tags, paying taxes, uh, filing documents, or attending court and so forth and so on. And there are others, okay, uh, a- as long as it's, it's business related, they have a right to have some type of access to the courthouse. And, and, you know, if you want to expand in this, I put in here as to find what constitutes essential business, you can do that.
Do we have many people from here that just come here, not to build vehicles, they just come to.
People come in, use the restroom, all kinds of stuff, just up down hall, right.
What, uh, Don and Mike can do pretty quickly, I noticed they've done that at Lowe's, uh, like Miss Lee's office, you know, they've, and it's pretty simple what they've done, a little plexiglass in front of your, uh, your employees right there. Where somebody standing on this side of the desk, if they're talking to them, they got plexiglass right here, but they've got room under there to slide stuff, you may want to do that. But if you do, that's something that probably can be done in-house fairly quickly for you.
You do that, Miss Lee?
Uh, how long does it take to stop?
Uh, they are.
It shouldn't take long.
The association, our association, they send down a letter asking us to, you know, go to the public or have a drop box put out, where they can drop their transaction in, or they can use blackmail, or they can go on our website. Uh, we have a lot, yesterday we had, uh, how would you do it here?
What do you prefer? What do you prefer?
I would prefer a drop box. I would prefer, you know, maybe they know that we have a website, but she would do no bad, for the drop box to make sure that we'll get that mail right in, in process and send them their papers. Or send them their receipt for the tax.
Miss Lee?
Yes.
The state of Cleveland is not a standard thing, when you come to pay utility bills, they use a drop box, more than the whole line thing, other than that, and even with the bank.
Or they can tell it to the maker.
Or even like somebody need to make a appointment, because I think all the banks, we need to go on the inside, call and make an appointment, you know, and I think that would be ideal, uh, sending your office a utility bill, a drop box.
Anyone else?
In, in, with respect to drop box and, you know, I talked about that, but the problem is, a lot of folks, they purchase their tags, pay taxes in cash. And, and so I would not recommend that we use a drop box for that purpose, because there, there is no accountability.
We have to.
There you go. Right now, we're going to go to, we distribute access, leave it at, and let's just get that motion out over next week.
As, as part of that, I'm going to ask if you authorize or she is, uh, you know.
And you authorize us to close outdoors to our offices, what you're doing.
Well, you, you, uh, keep in mind, as long as the courthouse is open and public has full access, that's about statute, that's about law. I just request a, courthouse has to be, so, so are you saying they have access, but the doors can be closed?
It's called access, they have to not make a point, it's like, you know, this will be posted, that way they got, they can still get in.
They have a right to.
They just can't walk in.
Once they get inside the courthouse, they're always, that they are, they do attend and they have, they should be allowed to enter that office.
Right, yeah, so the answer is yes. Which should be by afternoon, right? Right.
Mr. Griffin?
My name is Frank.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Seer.
Uh, did I understand you to say? Sir?
I want to make a statement about, speaking back.
Mark Seer. Did I, did I understand you to say that we have the authority to lock our offices? You can lock your office, uh, sure, but I don't know that there would be a need to, if the deputies do what they should be doing and the note, and, and the, the notes, I, I would suggest that you can leave your doors open. And if it get out of control, then you can always come back and ask the board, uh, for, to revisit that. So, you know, sure, you can, you can lock it because that, you got glass windows, do you not? And, and people can, your staff can see, okay, but I, I would recommend, I noticed that one office has been locked down there for years. And that's the, uh, election commission, they locked their doors, okay, so, uh, I, I, I don't recommend that you lock up, because deputies will have control of what doors are on. I was over in the other Bush account, and deputy was right there at front, the president, uh, he, he had his bottle of sanitizer to put on your hands, and those offices were wide, okay, doors were wide open. But you couldn't get past that deputy, and that was the key. Unless you had, you had to announce your business, otherwise you would not get, get into that courthouse, okay, and that was two weeks ago.
I, I would just suggest, uh, uh, along, uh, Miss Lee's office, possibly because y'all do people, you know, business across the desk, or somebody, maybe it's be at least one spot or two spots in y'all's office, that if somebody, if they do come in to, to conduct some business, there will be a barrier, like they've done at Lowe's and Walmart and different ones. You know, and, and possibly with this hand roll, is if there's some spot, anywhere we're doing business, uh, face to face with somebody right now, uh, I would think that would be, like I said, he's got a long counter, uh, it's kind of wide open, but maybe designate one or two spots where it's, you know, three, four foot wide, where if somebody does come in, you can speak there, so while you're doing hers, I, I think it'd be necessary to do the other ones in certain spots in there, if you.
And, and, and you got that problem pretty much all along, as well as the certain parts of it.
Yeah, she has this member of justice that's wet.
Me, a couple hours is wet.
Please, we're working. Anything else? Before we go to, uh, Ms. Hanson? So, so we are authorized, we, uh, yes, we, uh, we, department, we take care of this, we go take ourselves.
So, I would have, you know, complete the drop box.
Yes. Yes, we are.
Because my concern is my clerk's person foremost in place, and we don't know how to not, you know, they, they don't know, they, you know, they just come in and they do. Uh, and my, my clerk's have expressed, you know, concerns of freedom, so I think the drop box would be an, an alternative, um, thing that we need to do in some situation.
Do you have a drop box already?
No, I, I can get one, it's not.
And where would the location be?
If we say, if we say right there, they can go, uh, uh, um, tax office, and it will go out, here I can zoom out in process.
I think it would be ideal, uh, uh, make sure you put emphasis, if you don't pay, you know, pay by check or, uh, money, or I feel those people, I would be a issue to, uh, make it more safer for these in that front, because if the office is pretty big, these people are getting taxes.
Not as much as I say, it's a little bit.
And then also, you may run into situations where you may, well, I have some citizens, you may just want to drop the box, let him go into the office as well.
Any other questions? Just one more for you, uh, i- if, if you did the drop box, how would you handle their tags, if, if they, they come to pay, but they need a tag?
They have the cost of renewal, they have to, they will have to leave their phone number, and we'll mail it to them a correct address, we do our time for the bill, it's just that people do come in, we're not going to stop them. So, to make it safe for our people, I feel like the drop box would be.
You will put the drop box in the hallway that's inside your office?
No, right there at the door of my office.
No, you can just put the drop box anywhere.
Or you can put it outside, but you can put it right, I'm just saying.
I would, I would put the drop box at the door anyway. Just starting, anybody that has everything in the book and drop it. Anything else?
So basically, you'd be stopping people from going in, period? Well, then, I guess that takes me back to your office or stuff, you know, they'd still be going in that, that office, correct? Do you have a lot of traffic during the day?
Yes.
You'd still have people coming in, you know, those other offices.
I think if they do the drop box, of course, you have some team, cash, like, cash, money, or, and also, if you need to speak with one of us, call this number, they, 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 they can make a phone call, and then, you know, you can work something out, you need to come. And you still have the phone numbers out, because everybody else is on the cell phone, so it's just a matter of them getting a phone call, because you got clerks, he has, everybody has a clerk, clerk has a phone, and they can see if there's something that they need to come in house to discuss.
All right, that's great.
Yes, I, I, one thing, I, I did, uh, propose, uh, a stay in place order for the board to approve, and it's done, uh, in light of what the government did last week, I expect this, this, this shelter in place order, uh, and, and we know that, that we, we have some businesses and, and others, uh, who, uh, may not, uh, fully, uh, understand, uh, uh, cooperate, uh, the, the government has, and I would, and the chair has that we, uh, give them some, some teaching, uh, in terms of what, uh, uh, they can and cannot do. I would recommend that we approve that. uh, in terms of what, uh, uh, they can and cannot do, and I would recommend that we approve that particular sheltering place order. And, and, and I know, you know, uh, we got things like base shops and cell phone and stuff, uh, and, and we, we need to address that now, if they don't cooperate, then that's one thing, but we, we ought to have something to encourage them to, uh, to not have sit-down in stores, and we got stores outside in the county that have sit, sitting spaces, dining spaces, uh, there's still a lot of people to dine in, so we would, we would, we would ask that you approve that, and in addition to that, we, we had, we prepared a, just a handout for the chair to hand to, to them, or for the county to disseminate, to let people know that the county is concerned, and encourage people to cooperate with the sheltering place.
We're going to the topic of what is the first? Yeah. We've had enough change, if you would, but they can't review it.
I've heard many, I've heard many, uh, entities that are still eating on inside a restaurant. I don't know, because I, I was in, uh, actually, I was in Knoxville last week, and I went into the bakery, and everybody's sitting there eating, and I was like, apparently they didn't get the message, but I just got my, but I was wondering, and this is sort of a disappallation, you know, in Knoxville. So I was wondering, are we?
There, there are few courses in the chair department, but through our bonds and caution, uh, we, we just want to do something to remind them that they are not to do this, okay? And have, and give the chair some authority to go in and, and, and stop it if it's going on, if they come across it.
All right, anything else? Everybody turn on where we're going, with the limited access. Just leave your holder welcome to put the drop box into your office, as soon as the seat and I works out. We'll give Mr. Davis the next one, we give the protective shields up, uh, wherever necessary, it shouldn't take long to get to that, especially with the rainy day like the day tomorrow. Uh, Ms. Carter, you ready?
Well, we have a justice issue about the shelter, because I've got, make the most of it, we, uh.
Is this a shelter place somewhere?
Yes.
Anybody else ready?
Yeah.
I got a motion.
Sir?
I got a second. I want to pay a question, uh, in your focus, motion here, Ms. Davis. All right, sorry. Oh, sorry, you did? All right. Ms. Anderson?
Sheriff, see? Can I?
Yes, you can.
This is what you've been doing, you need to reanode to the sheriff.
I'll leave it outside.
We can do, I, I can do this.
Do the answer.
Okay, um, this morning, board members, we have a letter from the tax collector, and it reads as follows. Dear Board, it has been brought to my attention that Mr. David M. Carr's property has been compromised. The property located at four thirty-six Gold Fench Drive, River, Mississippi, was struck to the state of Mississippi in two thousand thirteen. Mr. Carr bought it back from the state and received a payment in two thousand sixteen. Prior to, prior to him buying it from the state, the tax collector failed to pick up, pick it up on the road to the state for two thousand fourteen, and caused it to be continued to be listed in Mr. Carr's name. In order to correct the problem, we need to remove it from the tax sale file due to an error of not being, uh, due to the state for two thousand fourteen. Therefore, I request the board to order it to be removed from the tax sale file. Upon admitting from the tax sale file, we will be able to collect it, and this comes from, um, our tax collector, Patricia Lee.
What is coming? Any vote?
It's on the circus.
I got a motion in a second, I want to pay a question, that's not a lot. Any votes? Motion here, Ms. Davis.
And this morning, I have, um, one petition for, um, the correction, uh, the homestead exemption application for Octavia Lamont Johnson. This applicant should be allowed social security disability for two thousand nineteen, the homestead was deleted in air. So I need the board's approval of this correction application.
Sir?
Yeah, motion in a second, I want to pay a question, that's not a lot. All right, any votes, motion here.
Um, I have here from Harold Mitchell from the County Law Law Firm, a letter in reference to the reappointment of David Earle as county Drapes District Commissioner for the Botha Line and Drapes District and the Riverside Drapes District. Um, and Mr. Mitchell has sent an letter to the board in the indication, represents the Botha Line District and the Riverside Drapes District, um, with county commissioners. David Earle, his face has served as a county commissioner of these Drapes Districts for over thirty years, was the first current term as commissioner, expired on March seventh, twenty twenty. CG Still the third, and we frankled the other commissioners of the Botha Line and Drapes District and Riverside Drapes District. Request that the board supervisors reappoint Mr. Earle as commissioner for those Drapes Districts for a six-year term, beginning on March seventh, twenty twenty, and expiring on March seventh, twenty twenty-six. And, um, Mr. Mitchell is making this request on behalf of, um, the Botha Line and Drapes District and Riverside Drapes District.
So, move.
I got a motion in a second. Comments, questions? I got a motion in a second, I want to pay a question, that's not a lot. Any votes? Motion here.
And Mr. President and Board, yesterday, we informed you that we have received bids for, um, the, an agricultural lease of one hundred and ninety-nine and quarter, ninety-nine and a half acres of surplus land in the industrial park in Washington County, Mississippi, uh, so I do have these bids.
I probably need to refuse myself, because I think my, so, yeah, I probably need to refuse myself, I think.
Blake Gordon, Ms. Your son. Okay. First bid that we have this morning comes from Blake Gordon.
I'm glad over there, you actually drive a truck in the court.
Okay. To the board supervisors, uh, the bid on the agricultural lease of one hundred and ninety-nine and a half acres of surplus land, with respect to your invitation for seal, seal bids regarding the above referenced lease, I am pleased to bid the sum of five thousand dollars for the property described in the bid bound twenty oh three. This bid is five thousand dollars from Blake Gordon. Okay, the next one. Okay. This is from Tommy Zappani. My bid for one hundred and ninety-nine and a half acres is eleven thousand, one hundred dollars a year. This is the bid from Tommy Zappani.
Questions, I don't have.
We have two.
That's all I have, just two.
I have a question, please, Blake Gordon, is this five thousand annual?
Ma'am?
It's five thousand annual, is it?
What was five thousand?
I said annual, you said five, I didn't know.
Yeah, five, uh, apparently, I think it's annual, you're not putting it on here, but I have to assume that.
Is this for one year?
One year lease?
Is it?
Is it one year, two years?
No, it's, it's, uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a two-year lease.
It's a two-year?
It's a two-year lease. A two-year.
So, move to the board.
To the house.
Absolutely.
I've got a motion, I have a bid, eleven thousand dollars, uh.
So you're wanting to bid to Tommy Zappani?
Yes, Zappani.
He's a, uh, leasing.
Fifty-seven, fifty-seven dollars for eight.
I've got a motion, I need a second. I need a vote, I've got a motion.
Same, same.
There's a main motion, we're second.
Ma'am?
Ms. Davis?
No, no, I'm telling you.
I want to pay a question, that's not a lot. Any votes, motion here.
I was going to say, in the future, will you ready to lease, well, do we have, you know, a spare party venue, so we need to know that, please, where they staying?
Do we ever get that one?
Uh, do we have two more sleeping properties, so we'll know if there are any that, or if there is, it's gonna happen.
Uh, that's something the board would have.
Any other answer?
It's all good.
Okay, what did you?
Name?
Yeah.
Uh, let me go ahead and give this, uh.
Come on, boy.
Morning.
Uh, the shares of West purchase fourteen book two vessels, um, the cost of the vessels are eight thousand four hundred and two, one thousand seven, seven cents. Um, we applied for that book two vest rent, and then rent provided us with five thousand two hundred and several dollars and ninety-two cents of that eight thousand dollars.
Go move.
Is this how much we can save?
Was the rent, how much rent?
Eight hundred and fifty-five.
Fourteen.
And how much is that?
Eight thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and seven cents.
I have more questions, I got a motion. Any more questions, I got a motion, you can say it.
That's it.
Yeah, I got a second.
What if, and, um, that, that's nothing twenty thousand.
No, ma'am. That's the total for all fourteen vessels.
Oh, uh, fourteen was eight, that was. I do want to say, because me, for you to say, I know.
Any more, any more questions? I've got more than a second, I want to pay a question, that's not a lot. Any votes? Motion here, Ms. Davis. That's it, Ms. Martin.
That's it, thank you.
All right, for the conditions? Very, 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 just have some areas. I will move on to, uh, to the, with the variance, with the length there.
Yes, uh, uh, I know, I don't know what word means, because Mr. Botha came with the board, uh, about their appeal. The board voted not to, uh, give the their appeal, not to grant the variance waiver. Uh, behind that, uh, I have been concerned, because, uh, I'm very familiar with Free Village. Free Village is very poor, poor place, a poor place where the housing is pretty much dilapidated, uh, it's in the east part of Mississippi, up in Washington County, it's not near, uh.
It's in fifty-two.
Well, well, the Mississippi, I'm sure, that's going to be raised in the area.
Yeah.
Uh, my biggest concern, the house is being built, it's getting too late, so the floodplain committee, with the floodplain board, they met and they, they gave the variance, and, but this board came back and put the opposite way. Well, when I look back and I read our floodplain that's got back in the board, I passed it out to guys. Y'all can try to press, one, and, and, I had like a, you missed the other one, Rick. And I have a chance to talk to you. So, yeah, I have a chance to talk to you, are you free with this, sir? So I have a chance to talk to attorney about, uh, actually, the Washington County Board of Supervisors, over stepped their bounds, uh, in addressing this issue. You go to page twenty-one, article six, uh, section eight. It says that the variance board makes that decision on waivers, and if there's a problem with it, it goes through Washington County, chance to recopulate, not back to Washington County Board of Supervisors. So y'all decided to overturn the, the decision of the, of the, uh, of the flood, the, the variance board, y'all overstated your boundary, you weren't even supposed to come back to Washington County Board of Supervisors.
Y'all on that?
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse, excuse, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
We're gonna get sorry, sir.
Uh, and, 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 let me, let me just say, uh, generally, uh, when the board's supervisors and act that ordinance is only reserved, some authority for itself to view. Unfortunately, when, when I was presented with this, I concluded that the board did not reserve authority in itself, uh, that Ms. Brooks was correct, and that, you know, uh, once the appeal board delivers a decision, if they, if someone is not satisfied, it should be appealed to the chain court. Now, this board can, if you want to amend or modify this ordinance, to enable it to have the authority to review decisions, various decisions of the, the board, of the, the appeal board, but it did not limit its, uh, it did not grant itself that authority when it adopted this ordinance. But you still have the right to do so.
Do we have the right to do so?
No, 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 you have the right to re, amend or modify the ordinance, you did not have the right at any point to, uh, uh, to decide, to, to, to override the decision of the appeal board, because you didn't reserve yourself that authority.
When was the old basis, average, you know, first of March?
Some time ago, this, yesterday, right, two thousand twelve.
Sure.
Two thousand, uh, uh, five to two thousand twelve.
Yeah, well.
Yes, and like I said, if the board wants to, since this board has a right going forward, uh, to modify this, to enable it to have that authority, but it did not have the authority to the decision.
What is, what is your recommendation, Mr. Carr?
Regarding to, um, and going forward, it has.
Thank you for that, thank you. Now.
Uh, going, going forward, I would recommend that this board, and it's up to you whether or not you want that authority, whether or not you want to assume that authority. As board member, well, the board members, board members have to say, yeah, maybe, if we want to assume this responsibility. If not, you can let it stay as it is.
No, I'm sorry.
Uh, I think, like, this information, if we, we would just take it, uh, under advisement, let's take a look at it before the next meeting, uh, so we can have a chance to look at it, have a chance to make a recommendation. But the, you know, the problem that, that I have, just like the weather we received from FEMA, uh, far as, uh, requesting possibly that we may be, uh, liable for some of these things that's, that, that we did give various to for that are under, uh, the floodplain, that we could be liable as a county and pay for that, and correct the wrong on this, uh, president. But, so, in light of all that, I think what we need to do is, is definitely look into it and see what we need in our next step as a board. Uh, and again, we didn't adopt this, but, Ms. Brooks, what I've seen in the last forty years, and I've asked a question up until recently, um, with these variants has, have come up over the years, up until probably a year ago, none of them have, hopefully, every vent, every vent's got, uh, uh, approved, up and, and that could be a year and a half, but everyone got approved, and my question, that's when we kind of started getting some feedback from FEMA, because all the flood insurance goes through the federal government, so that can give us all issues, you know, if we, if we're not invited by a certain roof. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying these roof.
Okay, uh, I agree that if the board decides to make changes, that may be more of a risk issue, uh, that's fine. And the problem with that, I think that when we have boards, we're appointed to those boards, I think that boards should speak, and I believe it might be managed, but you are at the rate, for Washington County, this, this board, except for while Brooks, uh, just angles the board, y'all, uh, put a variance assessment here ago for Allen Roberts.
Well, you said, uh, you, I said, I said over here, I didn't say last year, I said, I said maybe in the last year.
I was being clear, so y'all need to move on like nine months ago.
I, I, I think we should amend the law fact, simply because that doesn't mean we are going to, uh, say, for example, uh, actually speak to that issue. But shouldn't board be to have, to weigh in, we would have that power, if I understand correctly, is that right? Uh, that's correct, here, here you got two whole things. One, the board did not have based upon his own authority, authority to, uh, review the decision of the, of the appeal board when it did two months ago. That's first thing. Second, this board has absolutely authority to amend this, and from what I'm hearing, this board ought to amend it through it, so that in the event, you know, the, the, the issue of these permits get out of control. Then this board can step in to protect it, determine what's in the business of this county.
So that's just.
Your fault, yes, sir.
That's just a clause, you be your man.
Yes, sir.
Let me choose to use it. Some, some go break the, off the record.
Well, well, there's problems in that. For instance, if someone that is authorized by the appeal board to build below the floodplain, then you have absolutely authority to say this, we're not gonna accept this, okay? And to step in and override that, and allow the person that believes the board supervisor be incorrect to go to chain of court. That's normally what happens. But that was not what, I don't know why this ordinance was adopted this way, taking the power from this board. This board can now step in if they want to, and not retroactively change what was done, but going forward. Uh, the, 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 the reality is, the board didn't have authority when it denied that permit in the past, because once, once, unless someone appealed to the chain of court, basically, on this document. Then, the, within ten days, the, the variants was granted, within ten days. However, this board need to do what is ought, what is required by law, and restore its own authority.
Okay, uh, anything else, uh, there, Ms. Brooks?
Uh, okay, so, so let's get back to this, I, I know the latest building, I think you need to go ahead and let them go ahead and move forward with their house, because actually, uh, the decision that this board made was really cool.
Let me see, any more?
Am I correct, attorney, am I correct, attorney?
And, and the answer is, the board, uh, based upon this ordinance, didn't, could not stop.
Right.
Okay.
She just go to court, all right?
No, she'll be going, can't do that, bro.
No, no.
When he stepped over last.
We're gonna remind the court, sir. We received a warning about these guarantees. From FEMA, just like this board was saying. Since two thousand twelve, there has been an additional eighteen inches add to the floodplain elevation, because of the flooding that we started to have in Mississippi. In that warning that we have, there were several variants that were given and we recited and asked to be mitigation. What that meant was, why they actually raised those properties at the taxpayers' expense. So it's extremely important, you know, that we have filed a special. One other part of it, then, was the increase in flood insurance rates for everyone in Washington County. If we continue to not adhere to the floodplain and the freedom.
Which is why we raised the additional in the first place.
Why they raised additional eighteen and.
Yeah, yeah, that's what.
Yeah. And we, we continue to give various, they're low, we, in this freedom.
And, and, and the trouble, the trouble, Mr. Brooks, was that you agreed to the higher requirement, but you didn't modify the ordinance, say, this board gonna police this, okay?
Now, now that we do know, we will modify.
Oh, one, one thing, just kind of what you're saying, Tony, I, I look, uh, last month, and this is just not happening this year, it's been happening for the last few years. Last month alone, our estimated, uh, years gone by, our average rainfall is around twelve, thirteen inches, it was twenty-three inches. Uh, and the problem you have moving forward, when you don't have new regulations on there, let's say that this person builds this house, they might pay cash for it, and they don't need flood insurance. The problem that I've seen, and I've talked to people they've run into, when they get ready to sell, and somebody comes and looks at this house, oh, we love this house, we love this house. Now they find out that this flooding insurance is astronomical, and they back out of those sales. So, it does have an economic impact on it, you know, too, by doing this, cause like moving forward, like I said, I have several houses that people are trying to sell for less than the value of the house, just because it's in the floodplain. Most people are not gonna spend five, six hundred dollars a month on flood insurance, and that's, that's what's happening. And, and again, I've got several houses, uh, that was in the floodplain area, and it's, it can be a nightmare. Again, it's not a problem if somebody's paying no cash for it to build it originally, if they're not carrying the flood insurance. But we have to be careful with this, to make sure we're staying ahead of them, because I know all y'all get calls, just like I do, and I think Tommy probably gets the brunt of it. When it floods, you start getting calls, and if we don't, at one point, now, what we do today may not have a big impact on this board, but it will have an impact on the next board, the next board to come.
Uh, I'm gonna say that we should, should, I think, as I took time to go through this book, I didn't read it all, I think we all should go back and read, because I'm, I'm sure maybe some other things that may need to address in this little thing, uh, manual. But my biggest concern today, it goes back to, uh, Bo Walker's mother-in-law in Freedom Village, she's ready to build a home. At this point, the, the decision that the board made, first meeting in March, was, uh, null and void, because this, this is our bottom when it comes to the floodplain. And I think at this point, we would let them know, see, go on the board.
Yeah, I took a rather, that's, that's, yeah, personally, yeah. Well, the, the first, the first, I think the thing to understand, every time we have a substantial range in this year too, people in Freedom Village always have a problem. Which was why, that's a sidebar, I asked for the, the type of truck I asked for, because I can't get in there, because some people flooded out, they, they are, they are sheltered, they have to all be sheltered at the, uh, convention center. Because, because of, uh, the, the severe flooding day experience. And, and if it is counted by, or beyond the county, then everything drains into that, because it sits low, and so it's like a drainage to a bowl, uh, for them. So, the insurance is, is much higher, and we are setting, he, I want her to deal, but we setting her up for disaster when we allow her to deal, and she deal at the current, uh, status. So, so that's why I have taken the stand, I have, not, not because I don't want, you know, her to deal, I just don't want her to have to deal and have to deal with the problems that currently exist out there.
Well, her son-in-law came and presented to the board, we all heard, but Mr. Bo Walker had to say, he explained to owners, where her house is currently, she has a, a, a lot bigger home, and they rebuilding a really nice home, which I would commend them on with her there. But he explained to the board, when it floods, it does not affect the property, this house is right next door to where they're living. He said he ever had a problem with that, and they really wanna move forward and get this lady in a safe, affordable path.
Yeah.
So, I, and my only concern is, at this point, right now, we don't have the board to regulate that, because it's not in the floodplain. If we need to do it in the future, I don't have a problem that this is the board's size due. But at this point, we have to address what our ability is, the floodplain, we just can't change, we just can't arbitrarily change the rule, because we want to change it. We just go through the correct process, if the board, uh, decides to amend, we should do that. But we can't just retroactive, because, uh, the board, when y'all have, when he has this from FEMA and all those people, they sent y'all this information, but this board did not decide to go and review what you had in writing. And because you didn't, uh, that we have this situation today. So, never we get notices on anything, not just this apartment, uh, any type of ordinance we have, we get any type of notice from any federal regulation, we have to always go and look at what the language we have, so we can always make sure that we are in the right.
Yeah, so, this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, what, what, you said they were in the flood, uh, flood?
No, he, he explained.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, he's in the floodplain, it may not flood right there. But, I, I promise you, before your term, when your term, before your term, you will have people calling you saying, it used to never flood here, now it floods. But their whole, the direction things have changed, in, in the way that, 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 you know, that, that some of the water is running, and the, the higher elevation of water, it does make, make a difference. And one thing I was just gonna tag on Tommy, uh, with Tommy, I don't know if y'all remember, but the last flood we had, we, I think we give the approval to buy a couple camelbacks, and I don't know if any of y'all know what that is, Lorenzo probably knows what that is. They're not that expensive, with, with, somewhere like Freedom Village, we might have used them until we can get some permits worked out. What they are, they go in that tractors, and it, you know, they can move a lot of water, it helped, we borrowed one from a farmer, uh, in, in my district last time, and we, I think we give the approval, even, we just never bothered with it. But, uh, we, we need about two of them. Okay, we need a couple of those, and maybe that, maybe it'll help, uh, Tommy, I, I don't know. But, uh, but it is a serious problem, and it's, and it's way too serious, uh, like I said, like Tommy said, I just hate to see people that it comes back to home, you know, when, when they do that, so.
And, and that, if, if this board remembers, I asked our, then engineers to look into that, and to, uh, look into the possibility of poss- of possibly building some type of levee around it, or so, to, to, to channel that water away from, uh, uh, Freedom Village. For that purpose, and that was the main purpose. It was because every time the water comes down from Boll River County, or any other county, when we receive that, when we get massive rains, it drops right there. And so, we needed to build something around those people to send that water out, so that they didn't have to continue to be, uh, to be, uh, you know, to have to leave their homes, and have to be displaced and sheltered until that water's satisfied. So, that, that was really my, my reason, and all we are asking for today is, is, is a, a, uh, the opportunity to amend the law fact. That's not to say, uh, we, we, we are going to weigh in on every situation, but we don't wanna isolate ourselves from the, the, the authority that we currently have to do it, should we choose to do it. Yes, ma'am.
I believe, I believe the community.
Yes, ma'am.
But at the time, when Mr. Walker planned it, they, uh, they, no, they didn't say it.
But that's what we're talking about.
But we can't retroactive, because he's come already, and at this point, this lady is going to go ahead and build the house. Now, I agree with you, we, we need to reach out to the engineer who's here, and we need to talk to him about building something around it, so we can start addressing that area, the flooding area. Now, I think in the future, if I next board meet, as Mr. Gordon said, let's review the language in his floodplain, and as we prepare to make some, uh, recommendations at the next board meeting.
I'm, I'm cool with that, I, I mean, because all I'm really discussing today is the amendment to the law fact. I, I don't know, that's hard, but I agree, and hope to individual. Yeah. They explained to you, condition that was, that they already knew. That, uh, when it, when it, when it rains, he might not feel right there in house, but still can't get away and the water's all down. And she told me that she wouldn't mind going on, because she don't do nothing, you think that it would help to do this, they wouldn't mind doing it. So, I don't know, I would go back and visit with them and see if somebody else, or if they're gonna go with the eighty, uh, whatever the assignment is, but right then, they were willing to go on and put it, add it up. Yeah. It's gonna sit it up, and that's true. I don't say that, but they ain't gonna further, and that's the point, is that everything is to come right beside the knee.
Anything else?
So, Attorney Creek, I guess the concern right now, where, I mean, where do we go, because the family is sitting there waiting, uh, I didn't check the information with them, and the board did not have authority to, uh, to over, over, override the decision of the variants.
But they still have the permits from the camp.
In, in response to your question, Ms. Brooks, if the, the family is not satisfied, you have the option to go into the chain of court. The board, the board.
All right, it's that chain of court, but the, the, the variants board actually weighed, weighed the variants, okay? He was Washington County Board of Supervisors to change.
You understand?
But Washington County Board of Supervisors have the authority to do this, so why would he have to go to court? Also, this has to go back to variants board, a board.
You, you understand, uh, if, if this board, if you disagree with what this board did, and you can't move forward because of what, actually, the board did, you still have a right to go to the chain of court.
What I'm saying to you, but the board overstated its, its boundaries, so actually, they jumped in a project that they shouldn't, we shouldn't have jumped in, they shouldn't even come back to us. It's gonna be.
Re, re, reprove. Your point's well taken, but the board has taken the position that it is not, uh, reverses itself, as I understand what they're saying.
I'm gonna tell you to.
And, and if, if that's so, then the next step is chain of court.
So, who's the person who has had this life achieved? I mean, we, we have this language, are we saying that if we're not gonna, if the board is not gonna re, re, uh, go by this plan, so we're saying the citizens don't go by this plan as well?
Well, and, and I would, I would respond this way, uh, you would recall, I lost, uh, a contract that, that, that had damage in the board to go by, and even though I sprung it up, that it need to adhere to. So, the, and, and, and because of that, I would say, if this family feels aggrieved by what this board done, that's what it says, if it feels aggrieved by what the board has done. It has a right to go to chain of court, and ask the chain of court to decide whether or not this board was correct.
But if we don't know what was wrong, then we're the first.
Okay.
And this was, this, this.
And you can wrap this up, you can't prolong this.
Well, I'm gonna prolong it, that's my concern.
That's gonna tell.
The white question.
We have a time.
Got this, you?
You finished it.
Exactly. Okay, Miss, this, this book says, Mississippi, Murphy, Vash, and Angels. So, FEMA approved it as well, y'all got it on here, okay? So my concern is, this board made the decision, said neither plane enough, but this, this, they approve this plan.
All right, so which one?
The one I'm making is, we don't need to be, uh, harassing people when we have language there. This is the elderly woman trying to build a house here, a whole old plan.
One more thing.
It's not home where it takes, so if we, if we, if the Washington County Board of Supervisors not go by this plan, so the citizens don't have to go by this plan? Exactly.
Okay. You would miss anyone?
Uh, I, Mr. Seer, just pass something to.
All right.
Uh, this comes from, uh, the tax assessor, and this is in reference to a refund for erroneous deleted Homestead for two thousand and nineteen, uh, for Contador Johnson. Dear service, this letter is to request, uh, a refund for taxes paid for two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Johnson's mortgage company, L L T Bank, paid an amount of two thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve cents for taxes, which she should have had Homestead with taxes being one hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighteen cents for two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and eighteen, a deed from Desert Clay Hoedings, L L C was done to Long Pond Properties L L C in an effort to clear up the title. This deed was a long-term view as a deed transfer of title to Long Pond Properties L L C, which it should not have been. Therefore, Mrs. Johnson lost her Homestead for two thousand and nineteen. I'm asking that the board draft an order to refund Mrs. Johnson through her mortgage company, an amount of two thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents, and apply the appropriate amount for a two thousand nineteen Homestead with disability taxes. This comes, uh, this request comes from Mark Seer, uh, the tax assessor.
Please.
I have a question. Uh.
So. Sorry.
Uh, I heard Miss Lee came here early, she said something about, uh, the disability. the disability, she kind of got lost, I guess, how, how we have these possible? Whenever, I know we get, uh, no, every time we jump something, we gotta be, uh, people, and it's that everybody, they're on a tax.
There was an era, uh, when they were considering this property, they, they, they saw a deed being, a deed transfer in property, and that's what they considered, as opposed to this woman's Homestead. So now they got to put her home, you know, she, she was, um, allowed Homestead, but they did not take that into consideration when they picked it up on the land.
Anyone else? You love it. So more taxes. And all right, probably we can say, oh, that's, that's. Any other questions? Anything else you would like to say?
One other thing.
Okay.
Um, Wendy Mads from the Delta Business Journal, uh, sent me an email on Friday in reference to, um, an effort that the Delta, Delta Business Journal is doing, um, in reference to the coronavirus. They are doing a publication, they're, they're getting, um, the mayors and the county boards of supervisors to all pitch in to do this, um, this publication. So she was calling to see if Washington County would be interested in doing that.
Which pressure Delta pitching in? How much pressure Delta pitching in, how much what?
It's their business, Delta Business Journal.
What is going on?
Um, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, we should participate.
I would be doing that, again, once again.
Right, but this, this has got to be in response to the coronavirus.
It just gonna be in the, on the other end.
I would, I'd like to make a good deal, participate in the, uh, coronavirus project with the other business.
So you have a good deal, bro?
I'd like to make a motion that we participate with the coronavirus project with the other business.
Got a motion? Got a motion? All right, any other questions? All in favor, show us that, huh? Can you hook, move up here, huh?
Um, I don't have my reporter head on now, uh, but from Delta Radio Network, I was prepared to offer something you guys really wanna hear, but I don't know if we're having executive session or not today. But, uh, we're got, we're prepared, we're prepared to offer something to help with the coronavirus still. And I don't wanna get specific, because of it, business-wise, I don't wanna tell program what we're doing. So, are you guys gonna have an executive session? It takes about five minutes for me to tell you what I'm gonna do, you, I promise you, you don't wanna hear.
But I don't know if that qualifies for executive session.
No, no, uh, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have.
No, no, I was, uh, will there be another opportunity to tell the board what we're offering, so you guys can decide on it, or?
That's not an executive session.
No, that's not, we were, we're.
Sir.
At least you wanna do it right.
Well, I was just trying to keep it brief, uh, we're prepared to offer some free advertising on our, on our local radio stations with heavy frequency. We would just like some of the board members to voice the commercials and talk about what we're doing for the community. It's, it's the short thing, there's other, there's other things I can tell you that we can do, but basically, that's the, the, just the.
Six bucks. Outstanding. Outstanding. Anyone else? Done?
One more.
Two more.
I have, uh, two, uh, requests from the, that were approved in twenty, for my twenty eighteen, twenty twenty first through, it's in my notes, and they, uh, and a room tractor. Room and tractor, well, well, I actually have over tractors with, uh, flex, with flex room, roomy motors.
Let me, let me ask you, what happened, House, it was approved last year?
Yes, I, they're originally going to have it for the purchase.
But you had it on the last year, but I thought.
Yes, that is.
Why is it back?
It's a remiss, but, he said nineteen twenty, it's a vicious, but.
That's it.
Like, we already approved it, but it's coming out.
I would be expecting for them to be using the tractor.
Yeah. You thought you had.
Yeah.
So, but, I, I mean, it's already approved.
I, well, the purchase is probably, well, it's on state.
But you have a.
It's all on state.
Uh, can you break up?
Yeah. It's already been done. If you wanna redo it, that probably, from this point, you're both in, to approve the purchase, that was the second I was facing, so that's how I, you approach, hold you here. Okay, uh.
Appreciate you.
If there's nothing else. Who else?
Um, there was, uh.
None, what's that, is?
Um, well, there, there were three, three lawnmowers involved in that, so there are two different, they contract, um, uh, contracts, uh.
Well, well, you know we had two, so we got a third. You already had two, so we adding a third.
Pardon me? No, I, three, there were three, uh, seven two-inch lawners and one, uh, lawn, one, one big tractor. With the rooms. All right.
Have you approved, we approved all four of them?
Yeah.
So we approved the first, three tractors?
Three lawnmowers and one, and one tractor.
Three.
Exactly.
That's what we said right at the beginning.
Yeah. He said, yeah, two and one, right, no?
It's three mowers, and then they got a, they got a, a pull behind for a tractor, right? It's a finishing mower, a finishing mower to go behind the tractor he has. So really, there's three mowers, and then just finishing, kinda like Bush, always just finishing mower to go behind it, correct?
That's the basic. That's it. All right, it's gonna prove.
You got a tractor that'll pull that?
Yes.
Good.
All right, anything else? What's the next?
What do you think?
Oh, call, I mean, to, uh, I've had several calls, and I know you have took this and talked to you. Mail to an address, I guess that's wrong, uh, on the lakes here, Lake Washington, have calls. And someone said you talked to the governor yesterday, and it had changed, so you may want to clarify, clarify that.
What happened was, uh, in the governor's order on last, when it ended, phone call last Thursday.
Right.
The governor was, you know, complaining about large gatherings, having seen a large gathering up on one of the waterways coming into the reservoir, a hundred plus people, he was really out of turn. And, uh, you know, talked about fishing on the lakes, closing beaches, things like that. But his comments on the phone was, if you can get into a boat, one person will vote for you, you have six foot separation, social distancing, the fish. But when it only came out of private, under prohibited activities, he named fishing and state control the lake. So now surprises you, if you have your own private, they call you a property, you're good, state of the control, that's yours. But if, if you, if you, on a lake that's part of the river system, that's federal, that's not a state, if you're part of some of the flood control system above any service or nature, that's flood control, that's federal, that's wet. But maybe Washington, Lake Jackson, all of the lakes that's maintained by the state, there is no fishing. Five hundred dollar fans, I understand, talking to, uh, fishing game. David Sherritt from the Mississippi Association Supervisors, we know he talked yesterday, and, uh, nothing got changed, and everything was still the same with all the lakes closed. The reason people are asking, are people who have reservations to come here into the Delta and see, uh, feel the Delta lakes, and those lakes are closed. Those lakes are closed, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Would that include private land that gets on public, like, like, like Jackson, for example?
If you had, if, if you have a house on Lake Washington,
Yes, sir.
and you have a pier in your backyard, you should be able to be on your pier. But you can have other people on your pier.
And you do it in hopes?
I don't know, gotta talk to the game board. If you get off, if you, if you get into water, if you have access to the lake from your land.
I would, I heard you mention Lake Jackson.
Yeah.
Uh, is Lake Jackson, does that surprise?
Yes.
As, uh, a land and lake? Or does it feed you somehow and put you this in the river?
It does, I think so.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's gonna go. Yeah, I see, I, I've seen the state that have a frame, white roads and everything, so they maintain. So that's what we got going on right now, if you look at the governor's website, look at the latest, uh, uh, move of the governor's report from the governor, and look under prohibited activities, prohibited activities.
So, so fishing is?
A prohibited activity.
On this side of it?
Yeah.
On, on the, on the east side of the left?
Inland lakes are controlled by the state. The river is federal.
Somebody called me about that yesterday.
No.
I don't know.
Yeah, he was mad at the game board, uh, didn't believe Saturday, Sunday, or yesterday. But it should be, should have been Washington County.
But, uh, Mr. President, we, we need to amend our, our notice to inform, uh, the president, the county officials, the Washington, what else?
Well, they're trying to change the, uh, the order, you have to amend that, and then they're gonna get changed.
I'm kinda like Paul, but on the, the conference call last week, I well understood, saying that was okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't know, I mean, it may change, you know, again, but I was understood that that was okay. And then that's when I had a couple of calls, the game board had one in Portland, they were saying it was closed, so there's, uh, we had communication somewhere.
We heard, it's actually, something changed from the phone conference to actually.
So before we do it, I'll kinda see where this is going, and clarify that.
Yeah, and I'm, David Sherritt, they still hadn't got the change in the governor's office, he's in communication with the governor's office, and one of the people at the governor's office. So if it changes, you know, we'll, it's, right now, Lake Washington, uh, all in the office. Okay, if there's nothing else.
Uh, I want to place a notice to the family, first victim.
I start now. Leave you good, I will.
Uh, no.
That's a.
I'll get this. So, just to set the record clear, we're doing a meeting now, we didn't have a contract in January. Number one, we didn't have it.
Although.
No, 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 you, you made a statement, that I reviewed in January. No, 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 you're asking for my comments, let me comment on mine, in the, no, 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 we didn't have.
Because he stopped you from talking, so he stopped you from talking.
You, did you have a contract in January?
He stopped you from talking, so he stopped you from talking.
Okay.
You said, don't, the spell is on now, so don't bring that, not that.
Something is made a comment.
No, no, that's why I asked you, he stopped, and so he took your mail, and after he come back to me like this.
Okay, now, you made.
He told you, don't tell, you didn't tell, so don't come back to me like this. Don't wanna hear.
Nobody's in your face.
Don't wanna hear. Don't wanna hear, I don't wanna hear, I don't wanna hear. You stopping, stop doing this, don't come back to me.
So, moving forward, so moving forward, just to make sure that, that I'm clear, was, moving forward, when you say you stopped right then, that means stopped the conversation.
We would like to have all of it.
Huh?
We would like to have all of it.
Okay, so when, when something, a comment's made towards you, that, that I can't respond to that?
If it's gonna be disruptive, I would like to, but you, I can't stop anyone, you know?
Okay, so politely, I would like to say this, the contract was automated, and you can say what you want. And the other two things I was about to say, you're, you're, you're questioning my character because you made your statement because it's a black firm, you made that statement. So, so, so you question it because that may have something to do with it, because it's a black firm. You're so far off based with that, and I got one other statement. When we were talking about the victims, what does it matter if it was a black woman or a white woman? Why do you have to specify that, if it's a black woman or it's a white woman? So, saying that, you know, you're questioning my character about that, and I, I, you're so far off based with that. So, moving forward, I appreciate it if you don't question my character on it, because that, that, you're, you're off base with it.
Come and see.
No, I, I.
Come and question, Mr. Blake, there, uh, you can have a physical.
Uh, stars, uh. We had, we followed I M F, uh, in February, you're speaking to the gentleman, we got a company that's new.
We had a company.
Okay, we had a contract. What's your, what was contract built, sir? So in January, uh, I think that every board member, we have contracts, and we're discussing, if you don't, you're not stabbing them for getting contracted.
Have you read it?
I have read, any more questions?
I, I.
I have read, and if I'm right, they emailed it to me, asked me to email it.
I believe that, I should believe that.
I, I, just as I took time to read this, you had it four years, and you didn't read it, so you, you dropped it off on me.
You can do all your head and often, hand waving.
I can, I can.
If you can't be professional, by the way, sure. Look, this is nothing more than.
You're not professional.
I have no deal, I have no deal.
So you said I'm doing, so you said I'm doing a backdoor deal?
You got another thing. You got another thing?
So you said I'm doing a backdoor deal?
You can be all that.
Oh, you, you don't say, you don't say, say again, I'm doing backdoor deals.
You said.
No, you said that to me.
Please, I'm just about to get real quick.
Uh, as I was saying, we had I M S here, you've been the one that's, that's been against I M S the entire time, okay? I was not against it, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't listen to you.
Y'all didn't include me on, that's why I was against you, you didn't include me.
It was not included, it's not.
Oh, right.
No.
So, so, so when, so when was the deal made with I M S?
It was no deal made, that's what you're saying.
Well, how did that just happen to show up on our first meeting?
Because I invited it, it's, I invited, it's invited the white guy, Mr. Mr., uh, what's her name, uh? No, and I, hey, that's no deal, hey, said that I knew a deal, what's up?
So he just showed up?
So one thing you gonna learn about me, I'm very proactive, if you're gonna be nice enough to listen, as I did to you. I would invite anybody I think that the board needs to hear. I should not have come and tell you, may I please bring someone to board, it doesn't work like that.
So, so, that, that, our first meeting in January, that's the first time you ever talked to them about business engineering.
You do.
Okay, so what did I say, I wasn't informed on it?
Well, you, I, you know, you and I met, you didn't allow me to talk, because when it's, I mean, talk.
I didn't allow you, anyone, but see, that's not possible.
Well, it was, because you told me that you had another meeting, you said you had another meeting.
Y'all haven't had that first.
No, sir, you didn't let me talk, he knew the gracious issue after that, so.
He stopped you, yes, you know.
Okay, as I was saying, uh, when we found I M S, you said we got a, a firm, and go, you're gonna root for, blah, blah, blah. That was Friday, the next, you know, the month of March, then, it was another issue about the work. I just let the stuff ride, just let you feel good about what you're doing. But now here we go again, now you wanna, that's take the contract, we hit the contract since the latter part of January. So as a supervisor, when you get contracts, we don't take the pun and sell to review them, that's something on your end, you drop the ball for yourself. My concern, no, my concern is that.
And it is, you can finish, but the personal tax can stop.
No, I'm talking about all of us, when we all receive contracts, we don't review the contracts after we vote on them, after the president signs. That makes this board look like we really have a solid faith here. Who reviews a contract? I said, I'm, I'm talking about the board, because this just took place, uh, this, this, today, yesterday. This board, uh, said, let's review a contract that we have voted on, it's an order, the people are working, and number two, uh, also after the president has signed it, that's a reflection of this board. That means that we're not about these, we don't take time to read anything. But as far as the black people, yes, it's come that way, I, it becomes me that you apparently have a person against I M S because they are a black firm.
What made you say that?
Because you're supposed to tell them everything.
And, and so that's why?
Yeah, it's a person, you know, if a person acts other thing.
Because, because they're black.
But that's, I'm coming across some of the things you say, you made the slurs along the way, say y'all people, you make that from your.
No, you, you're wrong, so you, you need to, so you, you say, I say, y'all.
You need second, second meeting.
The second meeting, y'all.
You need y'all, you know, to say, um, I called, I, I, but after when I say the black.
You think you gonna talk me down, you.
I don't think you're talking down, it is real to, but you're simply finished with another black thing. The black, when I said the black.
The vote, the vote, the meetings, I need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
I know, you want it.
All the meetings are less than that. Most, most of the.
I'm saying, I'm saying.